Committee of the whole meeting for November 17, 2015. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Erins. Absent. Cammerer.
Here.
Harbinero.
Here.
Daney.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
President Wallace.
Here. The village committee meeting this evening has one item on the agenda under Public Works. Chairman Cammerer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this evening we have the one item, and it is on the potable water study update. And I don't know who would like to take that.
Let me just introduce the issue, please, while we're back.
Are you throwing your voice, Valerie?
[laughing].
You sound like you're up in the corner over there.
And Dr. Burke is back making his way to the floor. And you can see that we have some different options. Last time we talked, we have Jawa asking us to take a look at their product, 100% or 50%. And we have renegotiated some numbers with Elgin. And so I think that we have some good options, and we thought we would go through them and then try to discuss a little bit and go from there. Mr. Burke?
Thank you, Valerie. It's been about a year since we've talked about it, and we did talk about it a lot when we presented in the past. So what we thought we would do today is give you an update and present to you, not to make this any more complicated, but there are some new options that the board, new circumstances that have occurred. The world's constantly changing on water. Those of you that pay attention, and maybe not all of you pay attention, but in different communities, people are looking at alternatives as the city has adjusted their rates in Chicago and other options are being explored. So I thought this would be, we're trying to synthesize this into a, you know, relatively concise, and maybe we didn't get to do that. But after you gave us direction to talk to Elgin and to negotiate with them, we met with them a number of times, and eventually they came back and gave us certain direction. While we are waiting for Elgin to get back to us, the Northwest Suburban Municipal Joint Action Water Agency, and I'll call them Jawa the rest of the evening if that's acceptable, came to us, came to the village and proposed that they would supply the village with water. This is Lake Michigan water. So those of you that remember our presentations, we had included what we estimated to be, and the record showed that it was a significant buy-in fee. So you were not an original member community, if you recall, and so we estimated that it was about $14.6 million. They proposed to eliminate that expenditure. So in order to start receiving, there's other things I'll talk about, you would no longer have to pay that buy-in fee. They also said that they are going to, they are bound by city ordinance. The City of Chicago, their increases are mandated. However, the City of Chicago can change that ordinance at any given time. And so I don't want you to think that CPI that the City of Chicago is holding to is forever. And so the other thing is that they worked with us to refine the estimates of how much it would cost to bring Lake Michigan water to the village of Bartlett. And so what we did is, based on all the information they provided us, we pushed these numbers, we used these numbers, and projected a rate. And that rate that we and they provided indicates that the cost per thousand gallons drops $2.40. They also offered and suggested that the village consider an option that would give you a 50-50. And that would be, you continue to buy water from Elgin, and you buy water from Jawa. Why is that important? Because if you only have, you know, if you're only supplying half, then you don't have to build the second option that would be required for Elgin. If we go on with Elgin, we have, if you recall from the fascinating PowerPoints we had earlier a couple of years ago, showing this additional connection. Similarly, we have to have another connection into Jawa. If we only go, if you go the 50-50, that means you only have to provide one connection to Jawa and use your existing connection with Elgin. So there's some really interesting aspects of it. So then, as I said, we met with Elgin. And Elgin, because the village is very transparent, and we provided every piece of information that you guys saw, they came to the two conclusions. One, they may have to up the capacity of their water treatment plant 15, 20 years from now. And they have adequate capacity, as we presented, lots of capacity now. But that may require that they move up the period of time. And they felt, and I use the terminology, that the previous discussed terms of agreements were balanced in the favor of Bartlett.
Thank you.
So they, even though it was acknowledged that what we talked about was a frozen escalation rate, so we proposed, and they consumed the opportunity for us to have a constant escalation rate. So every year for budgeting, the village would know 2.5% annual increase. And if you recall that drawing we presented a long time ago, there's some spikes in the past where you had irregular ability to plan and respond. So they said, that's off the table. And by the way, we didn't increase it this year anyway, but that escalation rate, you're going to have, you're going to live with the, or you're going to be bound, let's say that, you're going to be bound by the rate that we pass on to our residential customers. The other thing they said is that rather than having a decreasing surcharge, right now they charge you a bump, 25% beyond, and so they want to renegotiate that. So those were the two things. They still understand and agree with the concept of a 35-year agreement. There was questions in the past about whether we could make it longer, but that was addressed before. So you can see that by virtue of their new position, it goes up about 90 cents per thousand gallons, the rate that we presented to you. So however, they agreed, they responded that they will agree to a 50-50 concept, where they will continue to provide just about the same amount of water that they do now, or even more, and still have a new source of water that would be the Lake Michigan. So that's the options that are now on the table. This is graphically what they've agreed to. If you remember, we had suggested and proposed to them originally that there would be a volume discount. As you, as the village, were going sole source with Elgin, that surcharge would eventually get down to a minimal amount of surcharge. What they agreed is, when we go over a certain volumetric rate, and that's about 2.75 million gallons per day, and you're at, you're close to 2 million gallons today from Elgin, as soon as you did that, they would bump, they would save you 10%. It would go from 1.25 to 1.15. But they would not budge from going lower than that. So those two factors, the fact that they were no longer willing to freeze the escalation rate, and no longer willing to have a reduced surcharge resulted in that increase that I mentioned. So what we did is took a look at the various options. We didn't present all the options because, and we have symphysis show that, and it's about, well, it's a big matrix with a lot of numbers. We tried, and we can provide all that, but we tried to simplify it for least discussion purposes. The one that's up there right now is 100% Elgin. But if you remember, we had suggested that in order to get the value out of your water treatment facilities and some of the higher performing newer wells, that you phase in that Elgin connection over 10 years. So that was the option that we were going forward with Elgin. And that also means you don't have to build the second connection right away with Elgin. We compare that with building the second connection right up front, having to forfeit some monies that you owe the water treatment company, the WRT. We talked about previous meetings. So that's included in the 100% Elgin. And you can see the variance in rates. And finally, we provided what happens if you go all in with Jawa and also consider the 50-50 Elgin-Jawa alternative. So you can see the range, and you can also see the number that we presented in 2014 and how that number has changed. So what we also took is looked at this, because on some of these alternatives, there's some upfront capital costs that you're going to have to incur. So we built the capital cost, but it's money that you're going to have to find a way to finance, and if you select these options. And going forward, we looked at, in the first five, looking at the 100% Elgin, but deferring some of the secondary connection over time. You can see the 2019 projected rates for the 100% Elgin and the three other alternatives. We looked at the capital improvements. And I should also want, I want to point out that that 100% Elgin, you're eventually going to have to pay that 18.5 total. You're just paying 5.7 originally and phasing in the others over time, over a 10-year period. We also looked at what you would do with 100% and the cost range for the rates, and this is all based on 1,000 gallons. So we identified the different sources. Once again, we have Fox River, your wells, and/or the Lake Michigan. So Lake Michigan option is included here, and so you can see the different types of conditions. As you know, we do have, if you go into 100% Elgin, 100% Jawa, or 50-50, you all have softened water. The only condition you don't have 100% softened water is as we phase out some of the wells. So you can see, we've tried to look at the different sources, the source redundancy. The 50-50 option is now, since it's being discussed and was brought up by Jawa, this is something that you have, that you have two sustainable sources to consider supplying the village. So what does this mean in terms of the increased costs? And what we did, if you recall, we had a similar exhibit in our original presentation. What we did is we took a look at the existing rate that the residents in the village are charged and escalated it up with the escalation rate based on inflation and other historical costs, that you have increased the cost. And this gives you a range of what it would cost different customers per month for the range in use. As I understand it, your typical resident uses about 6,000 gallons per month, and that would result in the corresponding increases if that's the decision that you make. So this gives you an idea as to what you would expect, the cost, based on everything that we know right now. So not to bore anybody, but to kind of a refresh as to what the different assumptions were in these underlying options is included on this slide. And so this gives you an idea of what we assume, so you can go back in there if you're so interested. And we looked at different debt service rates, and we looked at different options. And finally, the other thing for your consideration, just give you a timeline as to, you know, the first time we saw, you know, we said in our original report, Jawa couldn't have been nicer, couldn't have been more professional the first time we met them. Things have changed, and I don't think it's, you know, the water use across the region per customer has flattened, if not been reduced. So Jawa's looking at out years, needing some more customers perhaps. And so that's one of the impetus of them coming to us. And so all these things have changed since the last presentation, and we try to encapsulate and summarize what these options would look like, so you can, you're knowledgeable about these, and you can give us direction as to where we go from here.
I just have a couple of comments I'd like to make. You know, a couple of things that bothered me in what you said this evening is the fact that you said that things have changed at Jawa, you know, which is very good. Well, based on the first time that we talked about this, you know, we met in, Valerie, in the conference room, Adam and I, with you. And things have changed now at Jawa. Well, that was just back, I'm going to just pick a number, what, six months ago? Is that give or take? Right. And if there's change in six months, what's to say it won't change again if we make a commitment to do that? And the other thing that really bothers me is that these rates are limited by city ordinance in the City of Chicago. Now, I'm not so sure that City of Chicago is the most ethical person to be involved with, so. That's all right if you want to smile a little bit and laugh. That was intended to be a joke. So, you know, those are the concerns I have, but I would sure like to hear, you know, what everyone else has to say, because I'm pretty open-minded on this. I just have really concerns about that.
It is a valid concern. I mean, the City of Chicago is having financial problems. They sold the Taste of Chicago. They sold the parking rights. What's to say they don't sell the water treatment plant? So that's a concern.
I think Jawa's contract with the City of Chicago is up in nine years, if I recall. So certainly, that concern is a valid one, not immediately, but certainly shortly into a contract it will be.
Yeah. And I look at these rates, and if we just sat here this evening and tried to reduce everybody's, the residents, you know, the electric and the heating bill, and I'm starting to look at these rates. Yeah. They're a little frightening when you first look at them, to be quite frank. Now, I wanted to ask, if we have two sources, Jawa and Elgin, can we pick and choose where we would want to have the lion's share of our water come from? Let's say we wanted to go 75% Fox Lake, 25%. Are we locked into a 50-50?
That's a great question. It's one that we thought you might ask, and the answer is, all those fine details have to be worked out. As an example, your current agreement with Elgin says that you have maximums and minimums and different things like that. Those would all have to be worked out as to what you could vary from that 50-50. Can you go up to one, I don't know, 75, one way or the other? Those would all have to be things iteratively worked out with both of the groups as we move forward.
Valerie, when do we have to make a decision on this?
It would be good to have it done somewhere into the new year.
I'm sorry?
Shortly into the new year, I believe, and then we'll have to.
First quarter?
Pardon?
First quarter?
Yes.
I think our contract is up two years.
2019.
Yeah, 2019. So we have some time, but as we just figured out, these things change continually. So I think we probably, because of the prolonged, do you think we could have gotten a deal with Elgin had we went forward?
No.
Initially?
No.
Okay. Just one comment that I have, just trying to do this numbers-wise. And if I'm doing my math right, and they're charging us 8.60, that's our cost, right, for 100% Elgin? And if I do the math right there, that means that they're charging us, they're adding 25% to that, they're charging us an additional $1.72 per thousand?
Well, that 8.60, just to be clear, that 8.60 includes not only the cost of buying the water from Elgin, but it also includes the other costs that the village has in maintaining the distribution system. In that particular case, also operating and maintaining the other components of the system. So that case, that's a rate that's all in. That does not include just what we're getting from Elgin.
Okay, so.
So I, the Elgin rate, I don't want Mark to guess. What is the current, what is the current rate that they charge per thousand?
Something like 4.54 or something like that.
So there's other costs that we included in that, so.
Gotcha. Yeah. I understand. So it'd be safe to say that Elgin's making somewhere in the neighborhood of a buck every 1,000 gallons, which means if we go through 2 million gallons a day, they're making about two grand a day, probably 60 grand a month if we went all Elgin.
Approximately.
Yeah.
Yes, they're.
Even though this is showing that over the phasing out the wells over the 10 years costing 5.7, ultimately, we're still going to cost us 18.5 million to bring in the extra infrastructure. Is that right?
18.5 million in 2014, $15.
But those capital improvements will be ours.
Pardon?
But those capital improvements will belong to the village of Bartlett.
Exactly. Those are your costs in today's dollars that you're on the hook for.
Back up a second. Can you explain that again? The infrastructure's 18 million?
Right, well, so when you, when you say that we're going to have to make $18.5 million in capital improvements, those capital improvements are going to belong to the village of Bartlett?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, so we're talking about pipes, pumping stations, and?
Metering things and pouring things like that, yes.
Is that, is that regardless of which program we?
On page seven, right, it shows the 18.5 million.
And the caveat here is.
Oh, here he's talking about.
Great. And it's, let me just go back to that just for a second, because it's, so what we did, and it's a good point to emphasize, is that we're looking at the 2019 projected rate. You're not having to make all that, but in 2019, you will have had to make a 5.7 approximately capital improvement. But then, as I said earlier, you are on the hook for that differential to be included as you start phasing out your wells, because you were going to keep your wells for about 10 years. But as they start getting phased out, you will have to make phased improvements, including the additional pump station and additional lines to redo the plumbing, to accept all the water coming from one source, and that was Elgin.
So I have a question, actually, a couple of questions about Jawa. So we will have this contract with Jawa for approximately, proposed approximately 50% of our water supply, but we're not going to be a member of Jawa, is that correct?
That's correct. You would not be a voting member of Jawa.
And you said the V-word, voting. So if Jawa wants to head in a certain direction, the village of Bartlett doesn't get a vote in that direction?
That's correct.
Yes.
So we're trusting the water supply from a city that can't handle its own finances and an entity that we have no vote in?
Bingo.
But there's how many other villages that are on that board?
Seven, eight.
Seven, eight, seven.
There, that's some security, but not all.
No, I understand it, but, you know, again, just like you're saying, you know, I just feel uncomfortable getting a bit.
What happens when the City of Chicago decides it's going to switch from, switch out its wooden water mains? Who's going to pay for that?
Jawa.
Adam?
Well, I have heard, I have heard speculation that Jawa will, could potentially in future years not always take the water from the City of Chicago, could move to, say, Evanston or someplace further north, or I have no idea. This is your say.
They do talk about that. Trustee Kim, they've, have said at the end of the nine years, and they're actually, I think, doing some investigation now, that they could begin to take water from Willmet or Evanston, or potentially join the Northwest, what's the other water commission that goes through by Lake Zurich, and Des Plaines and that, that they could join with them and get the water more jointly. But you're absolutely right, they're looking at options not to have to renew with the City of Chicago.
And then you may have made comment of this, and it might have just passed over to me, but under the 50-50 Elgin-Jawa plan, when it talks about allowing remaining useful life of the wells, you have perhaps, does that indicate that there could in fact be a, say, a three-way water supply, wells, Elgin, and the City of Chicago?
Yes. We've asked the question. We've asked the question, obviously, Elgin's good with you using wells, because that's what you do today. That's what we're relying on. So we know that is existing scenario. And then we've asked the question as to whether or not they would allow us to phase in the, phase out our wells. So the answer to your question is, we believe that's possible. All those details would have to be worked out in a final agreement before that could be realized. But that would be the concept. One concept that we talked about internally is, yes, for a period of time, you would have three sources, because that would minimize some of your, you'd get the useful life out of some of your wells.
And that would in fact then bring down the cost as well?
It would, it would allow you to, yes. You're not buying already produced water, you're producing, you're in the production business still for water.
So it could in fact be a third, a third, a third?
It could be, and it would, that's obviously something that has to be worked out and understand, get an understanding with the other providers.
I know that I asked this question before, but I don't remember the answer. Do the life expectancy of our wells, Dan, is 10 years?
Many of the wells we've had for many more years, 50-plus years, it all depend, I mean, you have to rehab them probably about every 20 years.
Sure.
So it'd be one of those things, is if we have an issue with a well going down, we'd evaluate, is it worth rebuilding it at that point or just abandoning it? So that's what we'd be doing, is evaluating each time we have a major repair to do on the well.
And if you recall, we also had the water treatment measure that you would have to, if you terminated their contract, there was a penalty clause. And we know that you've invested a lot of money in the wells. We would discontinue a certain number of them that no longer produce, and the older ones, but keep some of the more recent and better-conditioned wells. That was a proposal that.
How did we arrive at the 100% Elgin water? I'm just looking at the first column, that's on page seven, and that's one you have up. How did we end up with the, how did we arrive at the 5.7 million for the five-year capital improvement?
We were going to just make some plumbing changes and upgrade the existing pumping station and not build a second connection. That was allowing you, we could increase the amount of water we were taking from Elgin, okay, and get it to about 2.75 or higher million gallons per day. But you would still keep some of your wells and use them and phase them out over time.
Yeah.
And then that triggers, eventually it triggers you making the second connection and additional improvements to get the pressure that you need to get your system operating.
Yeah, I'm looking at the second column now, where an 18.5 million for the five-year capital improvement.
Yes.
Boy, we could sure do an awful lot of work for that difference.
Yeah, well, in that.
Just the wells.
In that, in that scenario, you're getting rid of the wells in that particular scenario. You're eventually going to have to make those additional improvements, but you're phasing it out over time. Under scenario two, the 100%, the higher capital cost, that's doing everything, and forfeiting the WRT cost and moving forward with 100% Elgin, all in, one, you know, two pump stations and the plumbing I talked about.
Valerie, are we going to receive more information on this, or is, I mean, what's the, what's the process? We have a PowerPoint presentation this evening.
I think what we want to try to get at tonight is refining the general direction of where the board is leaning, and if there's any additional questions about the numbers that we're looking at here. Right?
That's correct. And, and if the board would like to, you know, think about it, digest some of this, we certainly can put it on another agenda absent any firm direction.
Yeah. It's certainly not a one-meeting deal. I do have some questions. Ray, were you finished, or?
Please.
Okay. The 2 million that you have per day, and you say it's our average daily purchase, so technically, we're using about 4 million gallons a day.
A little bit less than four, but yes, for ballpark numbers.
Yeah, so if we went to 100% Elgin, that 2.75 would kick in right away.
That's correct.
And so my question is, which is more stable and predictable supply? Elgin or Jawa? In your professional opinion?
Predictable and stable from a water.
Supply.
Supply. Both of them are fairly equal based on, you know, things change with the water quality on all bodies of water, whether it's an open body or a river. Neither one has a perfect scenario, and we've talked about neither does groundwater. So from a pure water. So from a pure water supply now, having this, you know, they're very close to being equal, so...
Yeah. Okay, so if that's the case, if those are, those are very equal, then which is more predictable when it comes to the price?
If you're able...
I've got to say Elgin.
I would suggest, based on everything we, being able to tie them down with that surcharge value that we talked about, as you mentioned, they're getting right to the 1.15 right away. And, you know, the only variable is how they increase the rates on a given year. You don't have control, so, and that, that's the only variable.
Still negotiable, right?
No, not any longer. It was at one time, we, they had taken that off the table. They said, we had suggested 2.5% every year. That was the, whether you increased it or not, we were, they were going to pass off, we were going to get a 2.5% increase. And if you remember, the average over a certain period of time was about 4.6 or so, so we tried to dampen that out. And they said, no, that's no longer something that we want to talk about.
But what we were able to do with this proposed contract that we were not able to do for the first 35 years, is based on our consumption, which we think we can hit pretty quickly, our, our surcharge will drop from 1.25 to 1.15.
1.5.
1.5. And we think we can get that right away.
With the numbers I'm looking at, I think 1.25 is crazy. A very, very large number times a small number is a very, very large number.
Right, well, that's the, the 2.5 is what we've been living with for the first 35 years.
Well, it would seem to me that there's going to be a natural downward pressure on the, on any increases in the City of Elgin, because the city's not going to, in order to raise our rates, it's going to have to raise their rates.
That's right.
Like the resident rates, and the residents aren't going to be too happy about that. So it seems to me that there's going to be a sort of a natural downward pressure on that. And I know Trustee Hopkins has a bunch of questions. Let me ask you about water quality. We need to do something about the quality of, of water in, in town. I think it's important to get that done sooner rather than later. Which one of these options is going to get us the best quality water the fastest?
I think both the options of the 50/50 and the Elgin option are the water quality, and we put it in our original report, the side-by-side comparisons, and they're very close to the water quality. They have a very good, they being, Elgin has a very good water treatment plant, and City of Chicago, which is producing the water, has a very good wat, water treatment plant. So you're having two bodies of water, they both are susceptible to things that we know today, but based on the water treatment technologies that are both being, are being used, you can have an equivalent water quality from both sources.
How much well water do we get from Elgin right now? Is it off Fox River, or is it...
So it's, the majority is Fox River, and, and, you know, they have a backup well that they use, but the vast majority of the water that we're getting, as we understand it based on our conversations with them, is Fox River water.
And it's 100% softened?
Yes.
We don't soften any of our wells currently?
No.
In this, in the scenario of 100% Elgin water, phasing out our wells over 10 years, how many wells do you think we would disconnect right away?
Maybe half, maybe not half, would, I guess, I don't want to guess. We, we're looking, it's not the number of wells, because as you recall, the wells have different capacities and different ages and different water treatment facilities attached to them. So you'd want to, you, you make a decision and try to keep the ones that are costing you the least, the least amount of money to operate and make...
Could we get some numbers, general numbers, on what it would cost to soften our water at some of our wells?
Sure, and let me, I'm looking to Mark. Mark, we included in that...
Yeah, I think we did that.
100% Elgin, the phased out, we included softening the wells, correct? Or not? Okay?
Not, not phased.
Not in the phased?
Because we're phasing out the wells, so making a best, not handing softening. We're phasing out of the wells.
Could I, could I ask you why we're interested in softening our water?
Well, if we're going to phase it out over 10 years, I know some residents on the south side of Bartlett have some pretty crummy water, and it affects them greatly, so I don't want these residents to wait 10 years to get relief. I think that would be crazy, and if it's a, if it attacks on a, I'm not even going to say a number, but I would like to know what it would cost residents to, see what it would cost to soften the wells.
We included all those costs in the 100% wells, and so we can get you those based on the recommended wells that we believe should be kept for that 10 years. So we will look at and apply that specifically to answer that question, so you would know what the incremental cost would be.
That makes sense.
Yeah, we really do need to improve the quality of water.
See, I might, I must be lucky, because I've drank my water since the day I arrived here, and it's been fine, but I know other residents, I've heard from other residents, and it's not. So, and I've heard a lot of stories also that it's the piping and it's not the water, and who knows?
Yes, Dr. Burke, and the 5.7 million on the first example, that does, that does include some maintenance to the wells in order to keep them open?
I don't believe we included any additional or incremental maintenance beyond what we're currently doing, because you currently, we included, we looked at all the maintenance costs that you currently incur for operating the wells, and we increased those every year by, I believe, 3% annually. So we included the additional, but we didn't include any major capital improvements because we're phasing those wells out.
Okay, option two, when we get to the 18.5, same, same question?
18.5, there is no use of your wells any longer. By 2019, you have abandoned all the wells we've included. And if you also remember, we included costs for water, additional water tanks for, in all these options, correct? So all these are, are normalized, so we included some additional water towers that are best practices. We've also included, based on input from the board, if you remember, we included the cost for interconnects.
Yes.
Looking with the community, so we've included those costs in those numbers.
Do we have an idea of what amount of the abandonment penalty we're going to be paying by the second option when we get to...
That's included in there.
That's included in there.
So our best estimate at the time, based on, it would not affect the numbers we've looked at, if we had to pay a higher penalty, and I believe it changed the water rates maybe a dime, nickel to a dime per thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Burke, do we have, just out of curiosity, if we went 100% Elgin, what would our emergency water, what source would that come from? Are we looking Streamwood or West Chicago?
I believe the, the Streamwood interconnect was one of the costs that we identified, and the other one...
Hanover Park.
Hanover Park. So we've identified those costs and included in those estimates that we've provided here, those costs for the interconnects.
And we also talked about, if the wells are still functioning, we would keep them as an emergency backup as well.
Unless it doesn't cost anything.
Were we not also talking to either Hanover Park or Streamwood to reciprocate as a secondary?
As emergency backups, yes.
If they were going to tie into us as a...
Right, both ways, yep.
Just my opinion, but it looks like if they're predictable and stable, supply is equal, and the price is less, and the quality is equal, I mean, I would just have questions about, you know, similar to Trustee Hopkins, you know, how quickly we'd be able to soften the water that we're blending in until it switched over with Elgin. And I know you said that the negotiation's over, but I don't know that it's ever over. You're really the Valerie that we know, so...
Why doesn't Valerie go out there and help you negotiate the contract?
I did.
That's just my opinion.
Good job.
What else do we want him to get? Numbers for softening, how long that will take?
We can, we can put that information together, be happy.
And then we can digest some of this.
Yeah.
What is our, what do our residents get charged now per thousand?
A what?
Per thousand gallons.
6.36.
Okay, so anyway, we look at it, we're looking at an increase.
And you would increase it over, that's, remember, that's...
Oh, that's 2019, yeah, yeah. Gotcha. I don't know, I, I mean, the only thing that makes me a little nervy about Fox River is I've driven past there so many times, and it seems so low. I mean, it seems like years ago, it was flowing over the banks. I guess it's cyclical though, right?
Yes. It's a big drainage area, it goes up to Wis, in Wisconsin, so it has a pretty substantial drainage area.
I have, we have, Tom had the old report and presentations that were given last year, and alternative one was the softening of our wells, and it lists ion exchange softening for existing wells as 6 million. So if we were going to soften everything, you'd be adding 6 million to that 5.7 million dollar capital for that 10-year program.
We just said 6 million for all of our wells?
Well, that would be for all of them, which we would have to do the bulk of them, but...
So maybe we would look at, you know, doing it for a certain region for a while to be able to provide some equal quality, is what you're saying.
Yeah, that would make sense.
Any other questions by the board? If not, then we're going to bring this up in another meeting. Okay?
Thank you, Dr. Burke.
That's all we have this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Camer. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Removed.
Removed by Trustee Ranky, seconded by Trustee Camer. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Camer?
Yes.
Carbinero?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?